Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the Committee Services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting, or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the usual way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the Committee Services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much. We'll now take a roll call for the minute and if members could confirm their present when I call their name. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
Apologies from Bailey Wright, Bailey McPherson.
Good afternoon, present.
Thank you very much. Bailey Scott.
Here.
Bailey Soares.
Yes, I'm here.
Dipolo Provost Cordell.
Present.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ilnackla.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and finally, Councillor Short.
Yep.
Thank you very much. That concludes the roll call. I would now ask if there's any declaration of interest for the members to the content of the agenda as it stands. And there being no declarations, then it takes you on to the agenda as submitted. The items before you there are draft audit statement of accounts. There are four of them listed. Dundee City Council, Dundee City Council Charitable Trust, Lord Provost of Dundee Charity Fund and the Dundee Trust.
Is there any officer looking to make any sort of opening remark or just go into questions?
Thank you, convener, if I may.
Sure.
Thank you. So before you, today you have the accounts for the twenty-one, twenty-two financial year, which reflect on the position at the end, and our colleagues from Audit Scotland will report to you as those responsible for governance on their review of those accounts. Obviously, they represent the outcome of those previous years and obviously you'll be mindful that that was as we came out of Covid. We'd seen significant change within the council. And I suppose for my part, I think that I'm pleased to see that we've successfully concluded these accounts as looking forward, we continue to have significant challenges and I'm happy to take any questions, convener.
Is the, can Bailey McPherson, I notice you're up for a question?
Yeah, thanks, convener. I have a number of questions. I don't want to hog it. So if you want to move on to somebody else at some point, come back to me. That's fine by me, convener.
I'm easy about how you want to play it. I've got a number of questions myself.
Okay, well, let's put it this way. I'll stick to the initially just to the ones I've got on page seven. And you might then want to take somebody else because as I said, I don't want to hog it. First of all, you know, thanks for the introduction, Robert, and you know, very grateful, as I'm sure we all are, for the hard work of you and your team in, you know, what is a significant enterprise, shall we say, in relation to the final accounts. My questions on page seven are firstly, under corporate services, your own area, Robert, there's a figure of over three hundred thousand pounds, which includes, but is not exclusively, but includes PPE stock that was written off. Can you give the committee an indication as to, you know, how much of that three hundred thousand pounds was PPE's stock written off? And also a little bit of a narrative as to why it had, you know, why it was written off and effectively not used?
Sorry, convener, I froze there for a second.
Okay.
Can you hear me? Okay. So, convener.
Very good game at freezing again there, Robert. Paul, were you looking to come in and answer that?
Yeah, thank you, Bailey Keenan, and thank you, Bailey McPherson, for the question. Apologies in advance. I'm having poor network quality, so I've got my camera turned off. And apologies, I can't give a breakdown in terms of how much of the three hundred thousand relates to PPE stock being written off. It's my understanding that it's a very small amount of that. But I'm happy to pick that up, that detail and share it with yourself, Bailey McPherson and other members of the committee. We dealt with PPE in a corporate basis in terms of procuring it and distributing it. So all the costs associated with PPE would have been held certainly and then allocated out to the departments. It's my understanding that at the end of that reconciliation, that there wasn't a significant value. So I would certainly need to check the detail though, and happy to share that with yourself as soon as I have it.
I'm grateful for that and, you know, particularly the reassurance that it was not a large amount of PPE stock that was written off. But obviously, it would be useful to get, you know, the quantity, you know, really that for it to be quantified. So that would be helpful, Paul, if you could share that with members of the committee. The second point on page seven is really around the shortfall in rental income from our council housing stock, which is over a quarter of a million. And I was just really wondering if someone from neighbourhood services could give an indication as to, and I'm conscious of the year we're talking about, and obviously the pandemic had not gone away. But I would just really like a degree of narrative around why we had a shortfall of over two and a half, sorry, two hundred and fifty thousand, it's two hundred and seventy-seven thousand actually, to be exact, in relation to rental income from council houses, because obviously that has an impact on the housing revenue account and our, and our own tenants.
Convener, I wonder if Mr. Thompson will be happy, or Elaine maybe can be best placed to answer that.
Okay, Elaine.
Thank you, convener. Obviously, it has been a very challenging year, both in relation to the void situation that has had a contribution towards that. We'd like to give reassurance to committee that we're working very hard to get that situation back on track. I don't know if Louise or Paul want to add to that, but there's certainly been an awful lot of work put into turning that situation around.
Can I just then, could I maybe just follow that up a lane? Obviously, this is the twenty-one, twenty-two accounts that were, you know, the draft that we've got today. Obviously, we're well into the twenty-two, twenty-three financial year now. And I was just really wondering where, how was it looking at this stage in the current financial year?
We've certainly made significant progress, Bailey McPherson, in terms of the void situation from the start of the year. But I'll bring Louise Butcher in just to give you the detail of some of the progress that's been made.
Thanks, Elaine. In terms of rent arrears specifically, Bailey McPherson, I'll come back to scrutiny in terms of what the current levels are. I think what I would want to note though is that last year was particularly challenging, given for a period of time we had restrictions on evictions for rent arrears during Covid. And that had quite an impact in terms of the level of arrears that were accruing over that period. And obviously, the impact continued into last year. So both Tennessee Estates Sustainability Team and Jackie Capel's Rent Recovery Team, we've been reviewing the procedures just to make sure we're absolutely aligned from a supportive perspective and making sure advice services are tied in with that to maximise folks' income. But that case has moved through the rent recovery process timely and as they should. I think what would flag is we've now got the moratorium of evictions now. And I suspect that we will start to see that impact again on the level of rent arrears. So what we're doing is maximising discretionary housing payments, defence grant, and just really focusing on the funds available to support those as required. And Elaine, I think, has touched on, on the void side of it. Thank you.
Fraser, are there any more questions on that particular page?
I was just going to say, you know, do not take it as a criticism. I'm aware of the challenges that you had in relation to the moratorium. And obviously, we've now got another one until the end of the current financial year. And I think we all understand the challenges faced by the department. What would be, what would be good as Louis has offered is to get, you know, some detail as to what progress has been made in the first half of the twenty-two, twenty-three financial year. That's all I was going to say on that. I did have a couple of other questions on page seven. But I'm very conscious of the fact there are other colleagues and I'm happy to hang fire, including yourself, convener. So I'm quite happy to hang fire until others have had a chance to contribute.
Fraser, when setting up the meeting earlier, it was in minds as to whether to have taken the audit first and then on to the accounts. And Fiona Mitchell Knight, who's the director of audit, has obviously suggested in the chat that that would have been how she would have preferred it. So I'm looking to sort of change the agenda around. We'll go to audit, then we'll come back to the accounts. In which case, if there's anything that the auditors, either it be Fiona or Richard, threw up to us, then it may change the direction of question that we would likely to ask. And I was minded to do that earlier, but just kind of run along the lines of how the agenda had been presented. So I'm going to pass over to yourself, Fiona, and hope you forgive us for taking the agenda in the wrong, or me for taking the agenda in the wrong order to start with, but over to you.
Thanks very much. No, and I'm actually really pleased to see the enthusiasm for members in wanting to discuss the accounts. You know, that's, that's really important. But equally, an important part of your assurance jigsaw, if you like, in having confidence in approving the accounts that you see today is hearing from us on the results of the audit, because we provide you with independent assurance on the audit of the accounts and also the wider aspects of the audit. So I'll be brief, but just to tell you that pages one to twenty-two of your papers are a covering letter with our annual audit report. And that provides you with some information that I'm obliged to present to those charged with government. So that's this scrutiny committee from international standards of auditing. And that package includes the audit opinions. And I'm really pleased to tell you that those audit opinions are clean or unmodified or unqualified, whatever terminology you're used to hearing. And that means that in our opinion, we feel that the accounts give a true and fair view of the council's transactions and the balances at the end of March twenty-twenty-two. So really important independent assurance for you on what you see in the accounts. Similarly, we've concluded the same results on the audit of the charities that are administered by the council. So that's really important for you to note going forward and something that shouldn't be taken for granted. You know, there's a lot of work goes into those accounts from Robert and his team in getting to that position. In our report, we report on some, some changes that have been made to the accounts as a result of things we identified through the audit. And at exhibit three on page thirty-nine, we've summarised the key ones of those. I'm not going to go through those in detail, but we're happy that the appropriate changes have been made and with the resolutions. And we've made some recommendations for further improvements in the future from that work. Again, you know, if you have any questions on any of those, please do ask them at the end of the presentation before you go ahead with approval of the accounts. If I then move on to our annual audit report key messages, and they're at page twenty-seven of the papers. And the first section is again reflecting on the accounts, what I've spoken about. But the rest of the key messages then reflect on the wider scope audit work that we've done. And firstly, on financial management, we reflect on the financial position for the year to twenty-one, twenty-two. And as you acknowledge, it's been a tough year and Covid has continued to have an enormous impact on the council and indeed across Scotland. We report on the underspend as a result of the impact of Covid and also report on the slippage caused in the capital plan, similarly from Covid and the impact. And that is of course a concern if it does delay on the council being able to deliver any strategic objectives. So something for you to keep in mind there. So that's looking back the way, but as you've already stated, you need to start thinking, looking forward. And our section on financial sustainability looks at the council's plans for this year's budget and further into the future. And we're comfortable that the financial management arrangements and budgetary arrangements are effective and satisfactory and that you're in a good position to face those future challenges. We reflect there on the figures that are coming out of the budgets and in terms of the funding gaps, which is substantial, and also the challenge of delivery on your capital plan. We then move on to our governance and transparency section. And one of the areas we look at is how well the council supported the new elected members following the elections in May. And we're pleased to say that the, in our view, there's been an effective training programme to support new and returning councillors. We reflect there on internal audit arrangements, so sixteen and seventeen. And we've noted in our report that target dates for implementing some improvement actions from internal audits have not been met. And that's something that needs to be a focus going forward. And part of that is making sure that there is strong leadership of the internal audit section in the council. And paragraph sixteen reflects on the arrangements that have been now put in place, a joint partnership arrangement with Angus to share the chief internal auditor. So this pilot arrangement has just commenced and of course, effectiveness of that will be reviewed. And that's for a twelve-month period. The final section of our key messages reflects on best value. And that looks at how effectively the council is focusing its activity in the future. So we reflect there on the new city plan and how the council is working with partners to deliver its priorities going forward. We say that good progress has been made in implementing improvement actions from the best value assurance report. So that's a good piece of news for you. The council aims to be in the top half of its family group of peers for local government benchmarking indicators, which compare performance from council to council. And forty-eight percent were in the top half, so below the target, but that is an improved position from previous years. So finally, we just reflect there on the challenges that the council has in improving service performance going forward alongside the longstanding challenges regarding poverty and inequality, at the same time as recovery from the pandemic and the financial challenges that are increasing day by day for everybody. Finally, I'd just like to reflect on the action plan points that are in our annual audit report. And they start at page eighty-five, and there are six action plan points. And again, I'm not going to go over those, but the council has given us responses to those action plan points. And we're satisfied with the planned actions that management have proposed. And that is something that will be monitored by future audits. I think the paper reflects on the fact that this is our last year of the audit, certainly my last year as the appointed auditor. Audit services in Audit Scotland will remain as your auditors, but it will be a different audit team. So I'd just really like to take this opportunity to thank all the officers and elected members in the council for the constructive and supportive approach to the audit and wish you well going forward. So thanks very much for giving me an opportunity just to summarise that. So I hope that's given you assurance on the accounts in particular to build into your discussions now. And I'm happy to take any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks very much for that. Fraser, Bailey McPherson.
Thanks, convener, and many thanks to Fiona and thanks to Fiona as well and her team in relation to all they've done in relation to, you know, acting as our external auditor in the period to date. I've got a couple of questions, but I suspect this one is specifically, I think, to Fiona. And it's really about something that you actually touched on, Fiona, and that's the sharing of the chief internal auditor role with our neighbour Angus. And I'm just really wondering, obviously, I appreciate that's only just started and will run for twelve months. But given the demands, obviously, we've had a, you know, up to the previous post holder leaving last November and obviously the principal internal auditor covering it until June. We've always had a full-time chief internal auditor. And I suppose my worry is around the sustainability of that into the longer term, given the demands on both authorities. And I'm just really wondering is, is this a, are there other examples of this across Scotland? And are there any concerns about the, you know, the time that frankly, a chief internal auditor can devote to the role if they're actually having to juggle two local authorities' plates at the same time?
So I do have experience of this working successfully in other councils. So for instance, I'm the auditor of Western Bartonshire Council and they share a chief internal auditor. So there is no reason why this can't be a successful model for you going forward. I think what's important is that the staff who support the chief internal auditor are of the right skills and there is the right availability of those staff to carry out the audit work to support that chief internal auditor. So that will be absolutely key going forward. And shared arrangements in these sort of roles are actually something that we welcome and see as something that can be encouraged in councils. You know, it's very clear that capacity of people with the right skills across local government can be limited in many instances and there'll be more challenges of that going forward. So it's certainly a model that we would encourage if it can be managed in a way that is effective. But I'm pleased to see that there will be a review in twelve months to reflect back on that, to see if it is working for the council. So no reason why it can't work, but you do need a good team to work with that chief internal auditor. Thank you. I hope that answers your question.
It does, Fiona. Can I just ask officers, in terms of this report back, well, I presume there will be some involvement of elected members in relation to that at the end of the twelve months, obviously with officers' views on how well it's worked and recommendations?
Mr. Cogan.
Thanks, convener. If I can just also add to what Fiona said, and then I'll pass over, convener, if you're happy, to Robert to answer the question from Bailey McPherson, is that there are a number of other changes within the audit team around capacity and leadership teams that Paul Thompson is just finalising. Once he's done that in the next week, I'll ask Paul to update scrutiny members and all elected members just around the change in leadership posts, which I believe will strengthen the team and will underpin some of the points that Fiona raised. And hopefully, that will give you assurance around the approach that we're taking within the council, particularly with that internal audit focus over the next twelve months. So I just wanted, convener, to let Bailey McPherson know and yourself, that we will come back to you hopefully in the next couple of weeks with that wider change that is happening, which relate to the points that Fiona raised and will provide that assurance, convener. If I can pass over to Robert now just to answer that specific question.
Thanks, convener. Thanks, Greg. So I suppose just briefly, the short answer to that, Bailey McPherson, is yes. We'll be reviewing where it's at. Internal audit is a critical part of the internal control system. And we'll be reviewing that ourselves and we'll keep you informed in the next year. I'm hopeful that it'll be an arrangement that we can continue with and we can have some stability and we can work effectively with the team on that. But absolutely, we'll keep you informed of the review as it takes forward.
Okay, I'm perfectly happy with these responses and obviously we'll wait to hear further, as they say. Convener, I have a couple of other questions, but again, I make the point, I'm not wanting to hog this. So if you have anything to ask or...
Perhaps Fiona, if I ask the question then. See, on the action points in page eighty-five and thereon, obviously, there's a risk of income is understated in annual accounts. There's a risk of non-recurring assets wrongly classified and valued incorrectly in the annual accounts. Could you elaborate a wee bit more than that for, you know, even when I read into the sort of agreed by management action and timing? And I'm not sure what's, what is the issue and what is a layperson in a councillor at Dundee City Council I should be looking out for?
Yes, of course, those action plan points, they stem from the findings that we had in this year's audit. And I'll just direct you to page thirty-nine of the papers. And while you're finding those, I'll just ask my colleague, Richard Smith, to come in and just to go through those, those two action plan points specifically for you. And if you want to hear about any more, happy to do that. Richard?
Yeah, thanks Fiona, thanks, convener. I totally appreciate your comments that sometimes we kind of dip into accounting language. So the first point relates to when you're recognising grant income. And I suppose all this is to do with making sure that the council accounts accurately reflect the income you've received. So this specific issue is related to income you'd received, but potentially could have to be returned if it wasn't spent. So effectively, there was a date at which point, if you hadn't spent that money, it would have to be returned to the Scottish government. So what we identified during the audit this year was that as you had passed that date, there was no reason why it would have to be returned, so you could formally recognise that as income and retain the money. So what we're just highlighting there is that it's not uncommon for grant funding to have a kind of end date when it can be clawed back. So just to make sure as part of the council preparation process, the officers are reviewing all grant income once it's unspent and making sure that if there's no requirement to be clawed back, that it is recognised as income in the current year. Because obviously, that then threes up money for the council, albeit it might be a ring fence for a specific purpose. But you know, you'll have that money going forwards, because I suppose the issue is if it's, if potentially it could be clawed back, you then need to have a creditor. So you can't make plans to use that money in the future because you're at the mercy of that money being clawed back. Before we move on to the second point, convener, does that make sense? Is that a better explanation?
I'm happy enough with that. And then the sort of point two, assets under construction, if you're able to elaborate a bit more on that.
Yeah, so the second point, and actually this isn't a major change to the accounts, but this was an asset that had become operational, but was still shown as an asset under construction in the accounts. So without getting into too many of the technicalities, that basically when an asset's transferred from being an asset under construction, so when it's completed to an operational asset, generally you'd have to revalue it at that point. However, because this was an infrastructure asset, they've actually carried that cost. So in this instance, all that happened was it moved categories. So in the notes to the accounts, instead of being sitting in assets under construction, it now sits in infrastructure assets and going forward, that will be depreciated over the life of the asset. But the reason we actually flagged this as a recommendation was, had it transferred to operational land and buildings, you would have had to revalue that asset, potentially upwards or downwards. And it could have had a big impact on the accounts. So again, it's just kind of a reminder to make sure that officers are reviewing all assets under construction at the year end to make sure that none of them have become operational. And that's, this actually isn't that uncommon to come up. We've had it before with schools where there's been a new build school and because they're doing a tandem build, they haven't yet completed the pitches, so valuation hasn't been undertaken. But in terms of the accounting requirements, as soon as you have kids in that school, it's an operational asset, it should be moved to operational assets and revalued. So I appreciate some of this is kind of getting to the technicalities of accounting, but it's all to do with just making sure the figures and the accounts present a true and fair view of what the current position is. Again, convener, if you want to come back to me on that, happy to discuss that.
Maybe officers could tell me what asset that was.
I'm happy to come in. It was to do with infrastructure assets, to do with the waterfront project. So it is a waterfront place. So it does a waterfront place. Yeah, Convenor.
What was that flood defences or something like that?
Um, I, I think it has more to do with, with groundwork and sort of infrastructure to do with pavements and paving and that sort of thing around waterfront place.
Maybe you can come back with a bit more detail and that would help us. Thanks. Okay, Fraser, you've got more questions than you would look at us.
I just had a couple, Convenor, and it's probably more for officers responding, but it's issues that have been highlighted in the external auditors report. The first one's on page 44, and that's around the Belmont Trust Estate. And I was just really wondering, obviously, this sits out with the city boundary. And obviously it's a legacy from times past, as it were. It indicates that the, the surplus from the, the trust estate is effectively transferred to neighbourhood services in order to cover the costs associated with maintaining the grubs. What I was really wondering was, as I suspect the costs of maintaining the grounds don't exactly match the £8,464 that has come from the, the, from the trust. I'm just really wondering if there's a net benefit or deficit to neighbourhood services in continuing to maintain the estate.
Convenor, if I may come in?
Sure.
Sorry, I froze there. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Apologies. There's a net cost.
Mate, you froze. Good, yeah.
It's been fine till now. I was sorry, apologies. I, I was saying there's a net cost to neighbourhood services. And we can provide details, Bailey McPherson, if you want. The sums aren't enormous, but the auditors did look at that particularly and they were satisfied that what was spent by neighbourhood services was more than the income that was generated from the trust.
Yeah. Has there been any review of what we do with the estate? And I, I remember email exchanges regarding this, but that's some years ago, to be perfectly frank. And just, I, I noticed Mr. Presswood's wanting to come in. So I was just really wondering, I, I fully appreciate the sums will not be large. It will be quite minimal in relation to the totality of the council's activities. But, but I was just really wondering if any thought had been given to the long term future.
Mr. Presswood.
Convenor, many thanks. Um, I think members who've been here previously will recall the world substantial legal issues in terms of disposing of the estate. My understanding is that those have now been resolved or are, are on their way to being resolved. And we have therefore commissioned specialist surveyors to provide advice to us on what potential options are for a disposal strategy. Because I think we, we certainly don't envisage that it remains part of the council's core property holdings.
And that, that, thanks for that, Mr. Presswood. I do remember, and I remember a now former member of Perth and Conroth Council contacted me about the issue. And, and at that time it was all around, you know, as you correctly alluded to legal issues. But it'd be just useful if elected members are kept updated with regard to that and, you know, in the fullness of time. And I only have one other question in relation to the external auditor report, Convenor. And it's, again, it's for officers and it's the, the point at para 90 on page 58 regarding the issues around the PWC review that's to be reported back to the scrutiny committee. And, and, and indicates that, that, that would essentially be our, our, our final meeting of 2022. I'm just really wanting to know is, is that actually on track to the best of officers' knowledge? Will we actually have that report coming back to the next scrutiny committee?
Greg?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor, and thanks Bailey McPherson for the question. I can confirm at this point, officers are of the view that a report will be available for the next scrutiny committee. If anything changes that delays that report, we will of course keep elected members updated. But that is the intention at this point, Bailey McPherson.
Okay, tha- thanks very much for that.
Okay, there doesn't appear to be any other questions. So Fiona and Richard, I'd like to thank you for coming up and doing my audit over the years. And wish you well as you move on to look after someone else's accounts. And hope we get as good a team coming forward to look after us and make our job and screen easy next time. So, Willie, is there another item then, a 2.2C is it? Or that we need to deal with or we're going back to the accounts? Sorry for mucking you about, Willie.
No, not at all. Certainly there is there the response to the external auditor's annual audit report, which is page 85 of a supplementary agenda. I'm happy to take your views, but I wish to look at that one before you then approve the accounts.
So Willie, why don't you run that again for me, please? Sorry.
Yes, there is a, a report there, the response to the external auditor's annual audit report, which was the last item on the agenda. So you may feel you wished to speak to that item or agree that item for then going on to the accounts. I'm happy to take, take views. I know that the auditor had asked for their, their reports to be taken first before you then approve the accounts.
I'm happy to sort of take the, the response then to the external auditor report now and then we'll move back to the accounts. So is there, is there any questions on that report or is there officers wanting to make a few comments regarding that?
Convenor, no, no comments to add. That's, that's a formal response.
Are we happy enough to approve that then? Okay, that's agreed and we'll move back to accounts and I'll again be gracious and let you in first again, Fraser.
You're very kind, Convenor. Thank you.
Yeah, you're very kind there.
Yeah, and I had one more question on page seven and a couple of questions on, I think it's pages 10 and 11 from memory. But I'm slightly losing the place in terms of where we are. Right, okay, page seven. And it was really under, and perhaps for Robyn, it was really under city development. And, and it was, there's, there's a, there's a million and a half of third party payments underspend. And it, it's, it's less to do with the corporate fleet recharges and more to do with the employability pathway. I was just really wondering if Robyn could give us a little bit more detail as to the extent of the underpayment in the employability pathway? And if we've sort of tackled that, that the, you know, such underspend wouldn't happen in, in the future?
Convenor, happy to, to answer that and to provide more details separately, if that would assist. My understanding is that that reference relates to payments that were made by Scottish government to local authorities across the, the country. And it was part of a programme called No One Left Behind, which envisaged transfer of funding for delivery of employability programmes from other delivery agents to the local authority led employability partnerships, which clearly was to be welcomed. And there were delays in setting out the criteria for use of that fund. And I think that it, it is what the, the, the accounting treatment referred to. It, it, it references. And I would be keen if the committee allowed me to just confirm the precise details and follow up with a, with an email briefing.
Perfectly happy with that, Robyn. Thanks very much. I only have one last question. Then I'll be quiet. It's on page 11. And it's this, and it's more for neighbourhood services, around the stuff about energy efficiency and the external insulation and cavity fill programme. Which, and we understand the, you know, the impact of the pandemic in relation to that. Obviously a significant underspend. And I'm particularly given cost of living crisis and, and, you know, rocketing energy bills. I'm particularly concerned, and I'm sure members in other wards will be concerned in their own areas where there are still parts of our stock to benefit from external insulation or cavity fill. I've, I've particular concerns around Abbotsford and Corso. And, and my colleague, councillor El Nakla, and I have both raised the issues because we had a couple of tenants at West End Community Council raising concerns about the Abbotsford and Corso, which is very similar housing to a lot of areas that have already benefited from external insulation. And, and Louise Bucher has given an assurance that there'll be a fuller update at the end of the current year on where that will sit going forward. My other concern though is what my specific question is, is in relation to the Logie estate where external insulation is not a possibility. And I was just, and, and internal measures will be required. I actually visited a tenant on Saturday to what I would describe as a pretty freezing house. And it's, and given that, you know, roughly half the estate is sheltered. And these houses are, you know, like now 122 years old. It would be really good to get some assurances from officers about how quickly the catch up will take place and how we're going to be tackling areas where the external insulation programme is not possible with, with alternative measures.
Elaine?
Convenor, maybe if I could start and then I can bring in Louise Bucher to give a bit more of the detail. But just to say that we have, as you've alluded to, Bailey McPherson had a very successful energy efficiency external wall installation programme. And obviously progress has been hampered by COVID, but also by some of the changes in terms of the specification for external wall installation. So that's one of the issues that we're working through at the moment and, and we're working that through with the Scottish Government. But obviously we are well aware that there are properties that cannot support external wall installation. And we need to find alternative solutions to that. And the, the internal solution is one that we are exploring at this point in time. And we are working on the capital plan with regard to the priorities within that. So I'll, I'll bring Louise in just to highlight how we're trying to achieve some of those outcomes through the capital plan.
Thanks, Elaine, and thanks Bailey McPherson. And I should aware our approach has been fabric first and that's how we started off. And it was external wall insulation, which is the solution that we've targeted over the years. And, and just with that, everyone's aware, we set our priorities or the areas that we're going into and based on SIMD. And we're, we're almost getting to the end of that EWI programme. We've got just over a thousand properties still to do. Now, going back to COVID, it's absolutely not an excuse. But for us to do external wall installations, there are internal checks and works that we have to carry out. And with the restrictions of COVID at the time, for the vast majority of those two years, we were unable to go in to do those checks. Therefore then allowing us to install external wall insulation. And what that meant is there was three major areas that were delayed in the programme. And that is our priority as we've, as we've been started, that we're, we're focusing and getting into those areas. And what I would highlight though is partway through that, as, as is mentioned in the report, industry standards changed, which weren't minor. And in fact, they've required a full redesign of our external wall solution. So we're having to go back through these three developments and review the design. And that I'm working with colleagues and Robyn's team for, for that exercise to conclude. And as Elaine mentioned, just finally, we are reviewing the capital programme though. Bailey McPherson, you mentioned those other areas that aren't suited to EWI. Again, we're working with Robyn's team just around what the solutions are. And as you'll be aware, EWI could be quite disruptive for tenants. So the exercise that we're currently going through is not only around those energy efficiency measures, but what other works can be captured at the time of going into that property to minimise the disruption further down the line. And that's what I hope to bring back an update to you on later in the year.
And could I thank both Elaine and Louise for their responses? And the, it would be useful, first of all, if, in relation to the thousand or so properties that are left, to be just useful to get a handle on where they are. And also what then of our stock it leaves that aren't going to be done under EWI. And clearly, I think, you know, I'm at the stage of really being trying to press on some certainty in terms of timelines on this. I, Elaine will recall, there were a couple in, in the, in terms of internal wall, there were a couple of void properties in Logie that were sort of piloted. Now, I went to visit them and was pretty impressed, I have to say, with the, with the works done. And I do accept Lisa's point, it's more disruptive obviously. But the, the, the outcome, now obviously, these have since been let and so on. And we'll have, we'll have data on how successful. But the, the outcome in terms of the, how can I put it, the look and feel for the tenant was, was very positive. But what I, I would say is, now I can't remember when I went to see that, but if I was hazarding a guess, I would say it was during the 2016, 17 financial year, certainly not in the 2020s. And I'm just very conscious as it just runs and runs and runs. And I think what puts it to the top of the heap now is the fact that we've got so many people with soaring energy bills, a cost of living crisis and, and in the case of some properties, you know, really hard to heat properties. So as I say, I would be very grateful for some follow up in terms of what's left to be done. Or, you know, if, if it's around about a thousand in external, can we have a handle on where these are across the city? And also what does that leave of our stock then not done and requiring to be done as well? I'm also conscious of the fact that there will be individual properties where it wasn't possible to do the external wall insulation because of owners' objections. And they'll obviously have to, you know, our own tenants will have to be revisited in these cases as well. But any further feedback would be really appreciated because I, I just view this as a real priority now, given the situation facing our tenants, given the challenges of energy prices and having hard to, hard to heat homes.
Thank you, Convenor, and thank you, Bailey McPherson. Happy to give, give you assurance that we'll provide that information to you and to rest assured that the energy efficiency measures is a top priority within the capital plan, which, which will be brought forward to elected members in due course. So you'll be able to see the level of investment planned for our stock going forward, but happy to, to provide those numbers for you as best we can.
I greatly appreciate it, Elaine. Thank you.
Right, maybe ask a few questions myself. Page 18, sickness absence seems to be up at 12.14 days. Is there any reason for that, given that there's a product, a prodone, it's been homeworking? And, you know, if I was homeworking, I'm likely to try work as, you know, as opposed to if I've got to get out in the rain, jump on a bus and go into town. So, you know, why, why haven't we seen the figures creeping up? Anyone?
Convenor, if I may?
Okay.
Can you hear me okay, Convenor?
Sure, yeah, sure.
But thank you. So there, there's probably a few things driving that. We've certainly, it's certainly an area that's under considerable scrutiny at the moment. And we've got a discussion scheduled with colleagues on the corporate leadership team next week. Convenor, looking at it, certainly what we have seen is an increase in long term sickness. And that's been more prevalent in some areas. So it's something that we're actively looking at. We had a constructive meeting with trade union colleagues last week, sorry, earlier this week actually, looking at ways we might support staff to ensure they're able to continue in their work as effectively as possible. And it's something I'm sure we'll come back to in the course of the coming months.
Okay. Yeah, that's another question then, or I've got a few questions actually. Page 44, mileage and subsistence, £266,000. And, you know, given the amount of electric vehicles we've got, can you maybe tell me why we're spending so much money? How is that being, being distributed? What type of employee are we looking to use their own vehicle? You know, such as are we asking care workers to go out and use their vehicle, their own vehicle? Given that, you know, things like taxi fares have went up. You know, even the contracts that council have had, the taxi fares and bus companies will have paid more for. And I'm not sure that I've ever seen anything coming forward that would suggest that we should pay more to our staff that were expecting to use a vehicle of their own.
Thanks, Convenor. So I'm happy to answer that. In relation to the figure in the accounts, officers would require to provide further detail and break that down. And I'm sure Robert and the team can do that. In terms of the council's fleet of electric cars, we deploy those through the communities between community staff, housing staff and social care staff. The current rate of mileage that's set by the council mirrors that, which is agreed by. by HMRC. And should the council wish to adopt a higher rate, then happy to discuss that at an appropriate point with elected members and for officers to provide the potential financial impact that that would have on the council. Happy to answer any other questions, convenor, that you may have on that or follow up after the meeting.
So I suppose as were fleet management team actively working on how that's reduced in our own vehicles are used to the maximum?
Thanks, convenor. So I'll maybe pass over to Mr Presswood as fleet comes under Robyn's service. But just to give you that assurance that we do try and maximise all of the fleet cars as a number are based out in communities to ensure that people have access to those. However, there are a number of people that choose to use their own cars also. So I can bring in Robyn just to provide further assurance to you on the question you've raised about the efficient deployment of the electric vehicles. Robyn?
Many thanks. The, the electric vehicle fleet has now, in terms of cars, there are no further petrol and diesel cars, so it's an entirely electric fleet. Cost of running them, as has been highlighted, is less than the petrol and diesel equivalent. Notwithstanding that, we recognise that post pandemic, there has been a reduction in demand for car journeys and we have started to reduce the fleet where operationally appropriate to do so. We work very closely in partnership with the services to ensure that the most cost-effective solution is used. Typically, that does mean a fleet vehicle, but there may be some circumstances where it's more appropriate and based on service guidance for the staff member to use their own vehicle. But management will be constantly evaluating that within the service, receiving specialist advice from the fleet team.
Can I maybe move on to then page 54, which goes on about exit packages? And, you know, I think I've asked questions on this before and received how, you know, it is scrutinised. Just that, I'm sure that when it comes to an exit package of one person going out the door and it costing £153,000, that that wasn't likely something that would receive political approval, given that politically we're making decisions about cutting bus services for 50 grand to take away the leather bus. So, you know, how can officers suggest that that would be a bit more transparent or there is a bit more opportunity for councillors to make a decision whether that is politically right?
Thanks, convenor. If I can maybe just come in and, and the first point of that question and then pass over to, to Robert. In the first instance, the information that's contained within the report and Robert can perhaps clarify is the actuarial cost and the actual cost to the council would be less than that. Council agreed an early retirement policy, which from memory included a payback period of up to one and a half years. The executive director of corporate services, the head of people and myself review all early retirement requests and if they meet the criteria of the policy which council agreed, then it will be agreed if there is a business case to do that. So we have taken a report to committee, committee have agreed the criteria and officers have applied that criteria in the case that you are referring to. Therefore, I believe that the governance has been followed. I don't believe it's appropriate for political members of the council to be involved in staffing decisions because the policy was agreed by committee and then implemented by officers. But with your agreement, I'll maybe pass over to Robert to add any further comments that he may have.
Thanks, convenor. The, I think just to add, the, the cost, the largest part of the cost is generally the curtailment cost of the pension and clearly we can't discuss any individual circumstances, but I can confirm what the chief executive said is that all of the cases that are agreed passed the test set out in the agreed policy. And that is also something that the audit, Scotland and Fiona and her team scrutinise as part of the audit.
I just, you know, picking up on what the chief executive said regarding the, you know, political involvement. Political involvement happens when they're at the appointments panel for, for individuals of certain jobs. So it wouldn't be unreasonable for there to be political appointment or political discussion about the exit of that or, or that potential individual, know that we're suggesting that it might be a senior officer, you know. So, I mean, I, I think there is a need for some level of political scrutiny. If we're going to bring in councillor Short.
Thank you, convenor, and hopefully my memory is serving me correct. I think we may have had funding come in from the Scottish Government to actually allow this policy to be put through the, the committee that it did go through, presumably it was P and R when it went through. Is that, is that my memory serving me right or did I just kind of set a wee bubble and, and get that completely wrong? Can somebody clarify, please?
Yeah, thanks, Con. I'm maybe happy to answer that. So, so the report was agreed in August 2020, if my memory serves me right. And I think councillor Short, Scottish Government provided flexibilities for councils to use capital receipts, but regardless of the funding mechanism, the, the policy that was put forward by the executive director at that time has been followed within this particular case. And the value that's reported within the accounts is the actuarial cost, not the actual cost to the council for the early exit. But I'm happy to follow up with yourself or indeed Bailey Keenan on any further questions relating to future exit packages going forward.
Yeah. Page 56 of the report mentions other income and expenditure difference between general fund and surplus or deficit, £33 million and the... Is it comprehensive, comprehensive income and surplus direct on provision of services? Could we, can somebody explain that in a bit more layman's terms for me? What, what has that funding been all about or, you know, I, I know that we've got a new team and they've done a marvellous job of putting it together, but I understood the sort of Dundee supporters version, you know, last year maybe better.
Convenor, can I perhaps invite Francois just to provide a summary of the adjustments there?
Okay.
I'll do my best, convenor. So clearly, there's two things going on here. We have to produce a set of accounts that complies with international accounting standards, which is ones that the authors shine off on, but we also similarly have to comply with statutory guidance in terms of movements on general fund. And because of course that influences our funding position, which obviously is used as well for, for seeing the council text. So what the statement tries to set out there is, is the, the key differences in summarised form between the funding basis and the accounting basis. So the, the important one for the council is the funding basis. The, the accounting basis is purely just for the purposes of the, of the INE and the balance sheet and so on. And so, so what we tried to do on that particular statement is, is to capture the key categories of, of differences between the funding basis and the accounting basis. Most of them are to do with capital differences and within that, the, the key difference is that for an accounting basis, we, we have, for example, depreciate assets and depreciation, which is using up the assets goes through, goes through the INE, the income and expenditure statement. But on a funding basis, that is, that you can't do that on a funding basis, it's a repayment of the debt that was used to, to acquire the asset in the first place. So it's all these sort of differences that that's probably the biggest single one probably that goes through there. And other ones would be things like the aforementioned actuarial costs, which do cause a lot of changes in the accounts. So obviously we have to, to show these actuarial costs in, on the balance sheet. But whenever it comes to the funding basis, we look at the pension costs we actually paid rather than what they actually said our costs were in the year on an actuarial basis. Because the actuaries numbers on the balance sheet is, is purely for accounting purposes, not funding basis. So those are probably the biggest single items, convenor, that are probably worth mentioning at this point. It's quite technical, but happy to say that the authors are happy with, with our presentation of these and happy to provide more details if you require.
This, you know, what would have been spent within this three or 39 or, or 33 million? What, what was the spend on?
Can I just confirm, I'm looking at the same numbers you, convenor. Are you looking at the figure on the, on the accounts page 53, under note one?
Page 56.
Okay.
The other income expenditure, other income and expenditure from the expenditure of funding analysts, difference between general fund surplus or def- defect and compensation income expenditure statement, surplus or deficit, provision of service.
These, obviously, the, the notes, as I say, explain the main reasons for them. Most of them are to do with capital changes, other of them are between the funding basis and the accounting basis and other ones are to do with the actuarial changes, et cetera. We do give a bit of analysis of them on, on the next page in terms of the, what, what sort of things we, we are referring to there. I mean, I'm happy to, to sit down maybe separately, if, if it helps to, to, to explain what, what actually is precisely within these numbers.
I think that would be useful, thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Scott, there's another fund, page 110, Scottish Government Low Carbon Transport Jive, a three and a half million. Could somebody explain what that is and how it's been used or?
Convenor? I'm, I'm happy to, to speak to that item. This was a project that had originated from an EU project called Jive, which had support from the city council, Scottish Government and two private sector partners. Regrettably, the technology and the commercial partner were unable to, to conclude the project and it therefore isn't being taken forward. So the, the provision within the balance represents the Scottish Government funding and an element of the, the EU Jive funding, which will not now be drawn down.
Okay. And can I be asked about the city's deal on page 124 and asked whether, how often that is reviewed from the point of view of its relevance to a change in economic climate? You know, I've noticed the Eden Mill project's still there, you know, I'm sure originally it was about putting the electrical infrastructure in there that I'm sure is in place. So why is it still sitting as, as part of the city's deal? You know, it seemed like, you know, we, we funded or some was funded retrospectively, given that, you know, I'm sure the infrastructure would be the first that was there. Electricity substation, I believe, was some of the work that was to be going on.
So convenor, the, the T City's deals account sit within Dundee City Council as the host authority and the responsibility for the management of them sits with the, the joint committee, as you know. If, I don't have details about that particular project, but I'm happy to, to get some detail on that for you in terms of the timing of them. The, the individual projects, as they are approved, are, go through the joint committee with our partner councils, which provides the governance of when they're going on and that will continue to the review projects as they go forward in the light of the changing economics circumstances. But that's a matter for that joint committee rather than ourselves. And as far as you're concerned today, you're, you're noting that these are the transactions that have gone through the books of Dundee City Council.
Okay. Are there any other questions? These accounts approved? Sounds like yes as well.
Yes, yes indeed.
Okay, that's, I think the business end, Willie, is it? Unless you've got another item ducked away?
Yeah, thanks very much, convenor. Yeah, from you, that concludes the business for you.
Willie's letting you go here.
Very kind. Thank you, convenor.
Bye.
Cheers, thank you.
Bye.
Bye now.
Bye.